Welcome to the podcast. Chris Graham here and I'm joined by Lori Struthers. She is the a independent candidate for the Ward A seat on Waynesboro City Council and we're going to talk with with Lori today about her campaign and about her. We'll get to get to know Lori a little bit here. Lori, first off, thanks for joining us here on the show.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, Chris. I certainly appreciate it.
And I've had the pleasure to know you for for at least a few years and a few is understating you. I've known you for a while. Um, folks know you in a lot of ways. Uh, you know, you've been a volunteer on commissions in the city. We also know you from your music as the dreaded blues lady. And so maybe just start off with, you know, tell us about yourself. Tell us, you know, tell your, 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 your music career. You know, you work at the University of Virginia. I know. Tell, tell us a little bit about Lori.
Okay. Well, Chris, I will say, um, it starts at the beginning and, and at the beginning, I'm going to say Virginia. I moved to Virginia back in nineteen eighty-nine. As it relates to Ward A, I've actually moved to Ward A thirty-three years ago, back in nineteen ninety-one. Believe it was March of nineteen ninety-one, when I had the, the distinct opportunity to own my first home. And it's probably going to be my last home since it's the same home that I am living in today. And so I guess from here, um, I got into a lot of different things, you know, working within the community. My first job when I moved here to Virginia was for Valley Community Services Board, where I worked at Substance Abuse Services. I did a stint there in Waynesboro on Hilltop, where I was the office manager at the Hilltop Valley Community Services Board. Location there in downtown Waynesboro. And so as far as my music is concerned, man, I started performing publicly back in nineteen ninety-nine. And I did so because I did a play in Stanton and I, Wanda, uh, Wanda and the White Boys, was one of the people along with Regina Stewart, kind of encouraged me to say, girl, you need to go out and, you know, you need to go out and sing. And so that's what I did. And so I've been doing singing the blues in the community for twenty-five years now. Uh, first started as the, the blues lady and then, uh, the dreaded blues lady. And so that's where my performance really comes in. As far as my volunteerism, you know, you said it, I've volunteered in several different capacities. Uh, whether it was for the Wayne Theater, uh, volunteering, serving as a intern, uh, working in the offices there. Also, just to get some experience to, uh, count a counter with the education that I was getting. I had my master's degree in community economic development. And once I graduated, I said, hmm, where am I going to get the experience, experience, the direct experience, with economic development as it relates to in my community? And so, um, I asked around and, uh, got some advice about the Economic Development Authority. I sent a letter to the city council at that time and, um, I don't know if you recall, I beat out Rio Hatfield to, to be on the Economic Development Authority. It was between him and I and, and I got the nod and it was like, wow, this is great.
That's it. And to me, I mean, as someone who's covered local government as a reporter for, you know, dating back to the mid nineties, uh, what goes on in economic development? I mean, you know, it's, it's something that people, the average person wouldn't think, oh yeah, what goes on on all these committees and commissions and authorities and stuff like that? The job of that authority is so important. And so maybe talk about what you learned as, you know, you have your background and education in that, in that same topic. But then when you're, you know, when rubber hits the road there and you're on that authority doing the work there, tell us what you learned in your years on that authority.
Well, well, I really had a front row seat in learning how we, you know, we, we develop incentives and things like that to bring companies, large companies, um, to the area. And so, I mean, that's just very succinct. It's, it's simple as it can be, but it's not just about, traditionally, it was about manufacturing, but I would say, as I was coming along, we were coming out of the, uh, so much of, of just manufacturing. We were going into a lot of, seeing a lot of retail, um, doing a lot of things for small businesses, wherein we put together programming, whether it be loans or grants, uh, for small businesses. Uh, whether it be, uh, working with their, their, uh, exterior, the way the business looked, uh, basically, to attract people to the business. And so just a lot of different areas, uh, in, uh, economic development and, you know, working, as a partner with the Economic Development Director who really did all the hard work and he would come to present to us basically, okay, here's all the stuff. You know, we've put together as far as packaging and things like that. And, you know, just, uh, looking through the presentations and going about, uh, making decisions, uh, based on the information that we were given from the director, but also other people in the administrative offices as well.
And, you know, people, uh, when we think about local government, because most people, when they think about elections, especially presidential year elections, we're also focused on the presidential. But at the local level, to me, the two most important things that a local government can do, and then I'm not sure if there's an order to these being one is one and one is two. Maybe they're both one A. It would be jobs, you know, the local economy, and then it would be schools. And they both go together because, you know, if we can, if we can have good jobs in the community, um, then those are both beneficial now, but also gives our kids something to aspire to that, hey, I can work hard and I can get one of those jobs and I'm out of school.
Yeah.
And the same thing with, with, with the school, you know, it helps provide money so that we can have better schools. So they both, they both go so well together, it seems to me.
Yeah, I think for sure. You got that right. Um, again, I've been, I've been, I served on the Economic Development Authority for nine years. And so I've been off of the authority since twenty sixteen. So I haven't been really, uh, keeping my finger on the pulse of, uh, where we're going, um, as far as, you know, what we've been doing lately, except of course, you know, I've heard about the, the North Grumman. I mean, you know, you gotta be living under a rock to not have heard, you know, about that. And so I've heard just briefly regarding that. And so, yeah, so that's been my brief experience with that.
It was not a brief experience, nine years of a brief experience. Yeah. It seems like something that you're, you're understating it there. No, it'll be, it's, it's a great background for somebody who's running for a seat on city council because so much of the job of a city council person is going to be, uh, involved in that respect. Also cultural commission. Now you, so that, that's where your background, starting back in nineteen ninety-nine, so twenty-five years, uh, as the blues lady.
Yeah.
And, and the cultural, uh, part of our city plays a lot into the economic part of our city too, in downtown.
It really does.
Talk about that and how you see those all playing together.
Well, I think cultural commission, when I think about cultural commission, I think about tourism. Um, and so a lot of the things that, you know, we were working on, whether it be Wayne Theater programming or whether it be, um, I know for a short period of time, I think two years, I had a, a short film festival. And a short film festival is a, a film that is of short length, basically. And so I had a short film festival and, uh, invited folks in. And so I did that for, uh, two years in a row. And that was very nice to just kind of experiment with those types of things. And then, again, like I said, uh, programming, uh, with the Wayne Theater, uh, working with, uh, uh, Claire, Dr. Claire Myers and developing his, you know, primary programming, uh, for that space to kind of transition, uh, the programming that, uh, we were able to create, transition it to the, the Wayne Theater from, so from the transition space up to the theater itself, uh, basically. And so just worked for a number of years, seven years, uh, doing those types of things. And not just with the Wayne Theater, but helping people like with, I think we did publishing, um, types of, uh, books and things, uh, within the community, like, uh, I know we did a basic city type of, uh, uh, book, um, or at least help someone, uh, create, uh, the book. And then, um, there was several other things like workshops and things of that nature that we would, would do cultural related workshops, whether it be poetry or the like. And so just the different things of that nature.
I love, what I, what I love, this is an anecdotal story, but a friend of mine who lives up in Lou Ray, uh, contacted me late last week, said, hey, my wife and I are coming down for a show at the Wayne Theater, uh, this past Sunday, as it turns out. And he said, so tell me a few places I can go eat. And, you know, I threw, threw a few out there. They ended up at the river, uh, you know, at the burger bar there at the river. And I said, it's hey, convenient for you guys right around the corner from the lane. And I look at, you know, I used to live, you know, so you mentioned the Hilltop House. I used, when it turned in, I think it's the same place on Main Street that my wife and I rented as a house and a business office for a few years.
Yeah, you guys lived there.
Yeah, yeah, we lived there for years. And I remember when we first moved there in two thousand and seven, downtown closed, uh, on Friday at five o'clock. Cause the only thing really downtown in two thousand and seven was City Hall. And so, you know, there was nothing down there. It would close at, at Friday at five and then open back up Monday morning at eight o'clock. And now, you know, down, that area of downtown has got life twenty-four, seven and
It really does.
And it's because of the Wayne Theater and all the, and now the restaurants are there and the, and the coffee shops are there. And, you know, it's great to see that what a lot of folks saw twenty-some years ago, uh, the catalyst for downtown has actually become that.
For sure. And those are the types of, of things that the Economic Development Authority has helped with, whether it be, you know, like I said, whether it be major manufacturing facilities or helping small businesses, uh, get it, get established. I can remember, um, uh, participating with Grow Waynesboro as, as a judge while I was, uh, uh, on, serving on the Economic Development Authority. So I was a judge for two seasons of that. And then even after I completed, uh, my stint, my tenure on the Economic Development Authority, I had the opportunity to participate as a participant in the Grow Waynesboro, um, for my small business. And so, um, again, you know, those types of things help small businesses grow. And those are the types of things, uh, that Economic Development, uh, Authority was involved in, uh, during my tenure. And they still do, uh, as I understand, the, the Grow Waynesboro.
Yes. Yeah. We get the, we get the regular updates, uh, from Grow Waynesboro, the competitions and things like that. Yeah, they do. So. So you've lived in Ward A for thirty-three years.
Yes.
And I'm sure you've seen a lot of change over thirty-three years. Uh, you know, in the last few years, we've seen, uh, economic growth on that side of town. That's very nice. The, you know, the corridor, the entrance corridor stuff going on down there. You know, I, I'm curious, you know, you're out there. I, I love the fact, and I'll throw this out there. I love the fact that our city now has ward by ward elections. So only the voters in the wards can vote for the candidates in that ward. So that means you get to go out there and when you knock on doors, you go to events, et cetera, et cetera. You know, you're talking to the voters in Ward A about what's important to them.
Yes.
What is your sense from what you're hearing from people? Of course, your sense too. You're a thirty-three year resident of that ward.
Wow. It's, it varies so much. First of all, let me just say, right, that unlike, uh, some of, uh, the folks that are on the ballot now, I actually had to go and not just me, but people that represented me had to go get, uh, signatures from one hundred and twenty-five Ward A registered voters. And so that's how I was able to get on the ballot. I did not have the, um, just the simple aspect of just getting the chairman of, you know, the, my party or whatever. I had to actually go and stump those grounds. And so I would, I would say the first thing, first and foremost is, is that Ward A people said, wait a minute, someone's knocking on my door, trying to hear from me about what, what the issues are. You know, they said that they had not seen that. They had not seen people come to them and be interested in what it is that they wanted to see, uh, basically. And so that's the, the, the first and foremost thing. The, the second thing that I would say that my direct eyes, uh, saw was, was that people said to me, you know, there were some things that I was concerned with, but over the years, those things have resolved. And I can say that, you know, I'm pretty much, I don't have a, a particular complaint about living here in Ward A. Now, of course, that's not everyone, uh, from other people. I've heard things about services. You know, like, for instance, I heard recently about, okay, we should have the boom truck back. We want people to come and pick up our, you know, our, our leaves and our, our tree waste and, and things of this nature. And so, you know, it, it, it revolves around, um, services. And I think, you know, who can't, whether you live in A, B, C, or D, can't relate to wanting, you know, better services in your city.
You know, I have thought for a long time, a couple of things that you, you said there triggered thoughts with me. I've, one, I've thought for a long time. I, I've been, uh, I grew up in this, in this community. And then I've been fortunate to be a reporter in this news reporter in this community for, for a long, long time. That, 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 that the east side of town, Ward A, uh, generally speaking, is, um, it's forgotten, you know, so, uh, it, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm not always convinced that City Hall, uh, is as, is as focused on, on the good of that side of town as it could be. Um, second thing is, what you said there, when, you know, about, you know, knocking on doors and people say, nobody's ever asked me what I thought. I ran for city council back in two thousand and eight and I had to do the same thing. Had to go out and get a hundred and twenty-five signatures. And you have to get a lot more than a hundred and twenty-five because you want to make sure.
That's right.
Right. So you gotta get a couple hundred at least to make sure. Uh, and, you know, yeah, every single person that signed it would tell me something different.
Yeah.
But they also, just the fact that somebody asked them was so important. And I think, I like your open mind approach. It's more like, you know what, you know, I'm glad, you know, I'm, I'm sure if a person knocking on the door is like, man, somebody cares what I think, that's awesome. I'm sure that's, that's, that's a usual thing that you're probably hearing out there.
Mm-hmm. For sure. I mean, again, that's what, what folks said, first and foremost, you know, people, no one, I've never seen anyone come to my door. People are interested. And so, um, and so, yeah, that, those are some of the things that, uh, responses that, you know, uh, we have been getting about, uh, you know, my candidacy, um, about, you know, what people's needs are, where they see their needs are. And then I would say some of the, um, the norm that you hear and, and I would say historically about our ward recently is drugs. You know, drugs. And then, um, I would say an uptick, uh, or at least a perceived uptick in crime. Uh, I think we've had, um, some shootings here, um, on this side of town, uh, recently. Uh, we also had one of, uh, one of, uh, um, a victim, uh, a beloved woman in the neighborhood. I think she's maybe about ninety-seven years old and she was attacked in her home. Right here in, yeah.
Know you're talking about, I think, yeah.
Yeah. And so, you know, those types of things, um, you know, people are concerned with, with an uptick in, in, in crime, um, that they perceive to be happening, uh, in the ward. So.
And that's something we, you know, that, that obviously city council, you could, you could work with, uh, the police department on and be a catalyst for in that respect.
Yes.
Um, especially hearing from people saying that. So, um, uh, you know, I'm, I'm thinking, so I was going to ask about, uh, one thing about, one, one issue that has come up years before, before the city moved the elections from May to November was there was always a concern expressed. At least in May, people are paying attention to the city elections, even though turnout was a lot lower in those elections. I, I ran in May of two thousand and eight and I think turnout was like twenty-five percent. And that's probably high for the last, you know, for that period of time. But now we have elections in November. The concern was, hey, you know, maybe people are not going to pay much attention to local. They'll just come out and vote and then they'll, they don't, you know, they'll cast votes down ballot that for, for people that are not paying attention to. What is yours? Are people, are people, the local residents, are they paying attention to the local race in addition to everything else?
I, Chris, I would say it's a mix. So I would say that because of all the, the rhetoric that's at the top of the national ticket, um, I think it's trickling down wherein, uh, people like don't want to put a yard sign in the yard. Because they're like, oh, I don't want to get involved with politics. And it's like, eh, you know, and they're, they're getting that because they're experiencing this, this, they're getting this vibe from the national level.
Yeah.
Um, and so, uh, wherein historically, when our elections were held in May, you know, not so much drama. You know, hey, sure, I'll put up a sign. I've seen signs elsewhere, but some of, some places where I've seen signs, historically, you know, I've gone and they're like, nah, we, we don't want to fool with, with, with the politics. So I, I see that that is a negative, uh, type of, uh, effect that the national elections may be having upon local elections. I would say as far as knowledge, I would say it is a toss-up. I've heard some people say, uh, we're having, we're having local elections. Because the, the national elections again are taking all of the bandwidth. Um, and so people aren't knowledgeable about local elections. I also think that, um, as we, we're transitioning or have transitioned from types of media wherein local media like newspapers and things like that would be more focused on local, uh, elections. I think that people aren't really plugged in as much as they can be to local media. Because if they were, then they would be able to, um, make some type of, uh, determination that there is, uh, local elections going on. And then the flip side of that is, is that people that, that know that elections are going on, they're saying, we're not finding the information that we need in the local media to make a proper decision. And then other aspects of it is, is that people are avoiding, uh, the, the candidates are avoiding participation in like debates and forums and things like that, because they don't, they don't want to be seen.
You know, I was talking about that actually with Terry Short. It was a week ago at the West End Fire Station, um, ribbon cutting. Uh, that as far as I know, and you think I would know, I don't think that, that any of the candidates have been, I don't, I haven't seen any evidence of any forums even being called this year. Have you?
Yeah. Well, we did a forum, was it June? Did a forum, a rise forum in June.
Okay, okay.
Um, and then we're getting ready to do a rise forum again in October. And only certain of us are doing the rise forum because some folks don't want to, want to participate. And so, um, and so I understand that maybe, maybe the high school, uh, in the past has done a forum or a forum was done at the high school and put on by someone else and that's not being done. And so, who knows?
I'm remembering back. So when I ran in two thousand and eight, there was a senior center forum. There was the Chamber of Commerce did a, a forum of some sort. And I've also in the past, uh, been a moderator for forums like at the city council chambers, who somebody put, so obviously the city didn't put that on, somebody else put that, and also the Wayne Theater. There was a group that put, and I was the, I was the, uh, the guest moderator for that too. So,
Yeah.
So, yeah, you go from, you know, and I think Terry's point was there were seven or eight this cycle in Stanton and, um,
Oh, yes.
The rise one that you guys are having that the other side won't even show up for.
Yes.
Other than that, there's nothing here. And that makes it really difficult to get your message out to folks.
Yeah, for sure. It does make it really difficult. And then I wonder, it makes me wonder why one community, it seems to be so much more engaged in getting, you know, getting the word out and engaging their, um, their candidates than another. And so I, I don't know the answer. I just know it is what it is. And you know, you just respond accordingly to it.
Well, that's why we're giving the opportunity here, uh, to, to, you know, get folks to get to know you a little bit and hopefully get the word out a little bit more, uh, in that respect. So as I, I feel like maybe we're, we're getting ready to wrap up here. What, what do you want folks, what do you want to leave folks with? Uh, about Lori Strutter, about what your, uh, goal is as you're running for city council? What do you want people to, to kind of take away from here?
Well, you know, Chris, one of the things that I did, once I, um, you know, got on the ballot, um, and even, you know, shortly in anticipation of getting on the ballot, I kind of used my lived experience along with my interests and education. And then what I was seeing, uh, here in Waynesboro to kind of develop my platform. And my platform, first and foremost, starts with, um, homelessness, providing homelessness and housing solutions. Again, at the end of my street, I guess about a year ago, you know, you could see that there was a large, uh, collection of homeless people that, uh, just, there's nineteen acres at the end of the street and it's fairly pristine. And it, it, it's fairly pristine. It was owned by, uh, J.B. Yant for a while and then went to, once he passed, I think it went to Fishburne. And so they held the property for a while. And then it's recently been sold. And so after it was sold, there were people just on the property. Um, they were homeless and they were living there. Uh, it was an encampment. And they moved to that encampment after they were, you know, moved from the Greenway. And they moved to the Greenway after they were moved from Walmart. And if you could get the theme here, there as development comes in, they're being moved. And so that space at the end of this road here has since began to become developed and they've moved again, once again. And so we have an issue with homelessness, but Waynesboro is not unique, uh, to that. I mean, all surrounding communities have an issue with homelessness. And so this became, uh, part of my platform because I intimately am aware of homeless, homelessness, because I was homeless for a period of time as a youth between the ages of thirteen and seventeen. And so one of the things that I say, Chris, that I'll never forget, even as a woman of fifty-seven years old, when it gets dark, it becomes unsafe, you know, and you, it begins, you know, to instill fear in you. And I'll never forget that. And it's like, it's not cool being homeless. You know what I mean? It's, it's not, you know, it's not a feel-good type of thing. And so it's like, what can we do in our community to collaborate with our surrounding communities to help with, with homelessness? Housing solutions. Again, you talk about being here for thirty-three years. I got this house thirty-three years ago and I paid fifty-three thousand dollars for it. And I was impoverished, right? I could not afford the, the, the monthly, uh, mortgage rate. And so I took advantage of the USDA, uh, Farmers Home Rural Housing, um, program. Wherein if you made a certain amount of money and you lived in a community that had a certain amount of population, you could, um, and you had decent credit and a job. And I did, I had decent credit and a job. I had moved here, um, from Massachusetts and I got, uh, tied in with a realtor who was tied in with a builder and I got this home and I, uh, um, took advantage of the subsidy that they offered me for at least the first fifteen years, I paid a hundred and sixty dollars a month for mortgage. And they subsidized the rest of it. And so as I look around and see here in Ward A, there's a lot of building going on, except those homes are two hundred plus thousand dollars per year. And if you're working at a McDonald's or a fast food or a retail shop, you can't afford a two hundred thousand dollar home. It's, it's unattainable. And so what can we do as a community to help, uh, with, you know, people attain, uh, housing? You know, whether it be their own home, whether it be, uh, an apartment, um, that's safe, that, that is fitting for their size family. What can we do to work collaboratively? Again, not that Waynesboro needs to figure it all out by themselves, but we have a whole, uh, surrounding community that is experiencing the same things. And so what can we do um, as a, a group of communities to, to see it through, to, to make it better? And so those are the things that I'm willing to have a conversation about. Um, those are the things that, um, that I'm willing to not just stick my head in, in the sand and, and hope the problem goes away. So I want to instill, um, in to the, the citizens of Waynesboro that I'm never not going to walk away from having the hard conversations. I mean, I have all the answers, but I'm not going to not talk about it because it's difficult to talk about because I've made up my mind about something and I don't want to talk about it and I'm scared or whatever. I'm not a career politician. I analyze things. Um, I think I have the ability to see what the problem is, see what the potential solutions are and, and be able to roll up my sleeves and work with my co-counselors to, to make a viable decision. And that's it. That's where I start with the homelessness and housing solutions. And then again, economic development, because of my experience with economic development, I can, you know, readily, uh, get in and, um, be able to support, uh, businesses, tourism, parks and recreation, uh, depending upon what the project is. Uh, and then also just infrastructure, again, um, uh, supporting what we already have, but then improving on things that we could possibly, uh, improve on. So again, working with my, my So again, working with my my co counselors to to make those things happen. And plus more, those are the things that immediately come to mind as far as interests, lived experience and educational knowledge. Those are the first things that come to mind.
We've we decided, Crystal and I, Agatha Repress here, decided months ago, maybe a year ago, that the housing affordability and homelessness issues, which are intertwined, are most important local issues, both in Waynesboro and Stanton. And I'm joyed to hear that that's a priority for you because that that's, and there are things our city can do to learn from other cities that have attacked this problem, are still working to attack this problem.
Yeah.
Work with the state government, the Department of Housing, Community Development, the Federal HUD. We don't have to figure out the problem ourselves. We can work with other people who are figuring it out.
Exactly.
Yeah, but this is, this is something we've got to work to address as a community.
Exactly. We certainly do. And then the other one that I failed to mention that is intersects with especially the homelessness is food insecurity. And so that definitely goes in there kind of hand in hand. If you don't have a place to lay your head, you more than likely don't have any any food to eat or it's it's hard for you to find food. And so that definitely goes hand in hand. And so, you know, again, I told you I was homeless about forty plus years ago. And so things have changed. And so some of the things that I've been doing is really working to get myself up to speed by attending certain community forums, you know, like the SAW Housing Initiative. They've been meeting routinely. I've gone to at least three of those meetings to, you know, inform myself about the state of the housing in the SAW area, the the proposed initiatives and 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 solutions. I've been attending at least two sessions of the what is it, Building Bridges for the Greater Good, where they've had homeless topics regarding homelessness. And then I think one of the things that I've done to really inform myself is meeting with the experts from like from Valley Communities Services Board. So several other nonprofit organizations that I I can't, they're escaping my memory right now. But I've met with so many also administrators in the city to find out what their issues are. And not just their issues, because, you know, everybody has successes too. And so, you know, but they know more than anybody, much more intimately about what the issues are, what their solutions are. And they're able to to share it with you so very candidly. And so I've met with the police chief, the fire chief, the Economic Development Director, the Assistant City Manager, the Public Works aspect of it. Just so, just many other, you know, city officials that I've met with. And, you know, I've and even the city manager as well. And so just trying to, you know, get a grip as far as I'm concerned about current situations that are going on. So I have this past experience, whether it be a lived experience or whether it be experience with working with the city. And so I thought it was, you know, just pertinent for me to get out there and see what's going on, what's happening right now, get a more hands on approach to it. And so I really enjoyed that too, Chris.
You've got my juices flowing. You're reminding me of all the things that I were, a lot of the things I did when I was running for city council sixteen years. You got to meet with the people who are making these decisions and work on this stuff day to day. And you're doing all the things. Yeah, yeah.
For sure.
This is, this is, this is the Lori Strutter we've known and loved for a long time. So
Well, thank you so much. I certainly appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much for, yeah, for the time today. And, yeah, and and for the people who are, so I know early voting has been underway for over a month now. There's still, we're talking less than two weeks until Election Day. For folks out there listening, if you, if you, if you, if this is your first exposure to Lori Strutter, you've got a lot of ammunition now as far as going out there and and being informed about your vote. You can vote early, you can vote on November fifth. And and now you know a lot more about Lori. Well, Lori, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Between now and Election Day.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it, Chris. Thank you for having me.